Welcome to everyone for coming. I'm Ravey Moran. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara. Before we get started, I would like to, because this week is going to be, next week is Indigenous Peoples' Day, I would like to respectfully acknowledge this land that we are on is Schumash Land. And the Native Americans were sadly, ironically, which really isn't the correct word, ironically, the last group of people who were given citizenship and the right to vote. It wasn't until 1965, when the Voting Rights Act was passed, that they were given full citizenship and the right to vote, and it still has some issues today. That was at the federal level, anyway. We're holding these candidate forums as public service to all voters. What we would like is for all voters to be as well informed as possible, and when you go to fill out your ballots, that you know who the candidates are and what the issues are that are being represented. The mail-in ballots are going to be mailed out on October 7th, so that's coming up, so look for your packet in the mail. When you go to fill out your ballot, please follow the instructions that comes with your ballot carefully. For example, be sure to sign your ballot on the outside of the envelope before you return it. So I'd like to express our thanks to the Community Environmental Council for hosting our forum at this beautiful location. It's really nice. We also owe a big thank you to TVSB for recording our forums, and they will be available on our website for later viewing. And because we have Sylvia Uribe from Transal Pro, who's providing simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, we'll be able to post the recordings in both English and Spanish on our website. That will be on our YouTube channel. If you go to our homepage, and you go to the bottom, there's a little icon for YouTube, and that's where you'll find our forums, our recordings. Finally, we want to thank the Santa Barbara, Galleta Valley Branch of AAUW, the American Association of University Women, for co-sponsoring our forums. So let's move on to our forum. Many of you may know our moderator, because he served as Santa Barbara's County Council from 1994 to 2008. After retiring, Shane became president of our education forum, and he, following consolidation of our education fund with our league, then he continued as a valuable member of our executive board. So please, in addition, he's a member of Santa Barbara's Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, where he represents the interest of the public in receiving good orderly government services. So please join me in welcoming Shane Stark, tonight's moderator.
I should note at the outset that I've made it my mission to put the "la" back in LAFCO. Thus far, utterly unsuccessful, I should tell you. So let's start the candidate forum. I ask you to please refrain from outbursts and displays, signs, t-shirts, no fruit. And you can't throw the fruit, particularly no fruit, at the moderator. In any event, hold your applause till the end. This will help us get through more questions and maintain our neutral tone. I'd like to introduce Mike Jordan and Tara Taylor, the two candidates for the City Council for Santa Barbara from the 2nd District. Here's how our forum works. We follow the traditional League of Women Voters process and ground rules, which the candidates have agreed to. To maintain civility, the key word, civility, and the issue-oriented nature of our forum, we don't allow negative comments about other candidates' character and qualifications, but rather ask the speakers to address their own qualifications and vision for office, and their views on issues facing the city of Santa Barbara. Criticism of an opponent's actions and positions on issues are permissible. There are no character attacks. You can criticize positions and issues. We will start with a two-minute opening statement for each candidate. We ask you to focus on your qualifications, your motivation, your main priorities, and your main concerns. After you finish with that, I'll ask some questions. You have up to 90 seconds to respond to each question. If you can respond in less time, that's fine, too. Even if you agree with your opponent, you can simply indicate that you agree. That way, we can get more questions here. Our high-tech timer, straight from Vandenberg Space Force Base, and controlled by a secret AI bot, hitherto unknown, VoteTron. In any event, we'll rotate the order of responses. So let's have the opening statements. I would select Ms. Taylor to go first.
Good evening. I want to start by saying thank you very much to the League of Women Voters and to the Community Environmental Council, as well as Mike Jordan, for being here tonight and making this event possible, so that we have the opportunity both to interact with the community and for the community to present issues and concerns to us, so that we can better represent you, hopefully. The position that I'm seeking is as the council representative for the Mesa District, District 2. And the reason why I am seeking that position is I have an extensive amount of experience serving communities here in Santa Barbara and in other places in the nation. And I want to take that, because I see an opportunity to convey and assist in certain areas and conversations that are happening in the city in a way I think that adds new perspective. I also still think that it's very important that we have options, so when we have these local elections, that we have more than just one person to run, that we have a selection. And I think that we'll have, we'll see that roll up into a later state in our election process here in the United States, so we have a better quality of candidates. And on that, I think I'm going to go ahead and wrap up. I see my timer's running down. And I thank you all very much for being here this evening, and I hope you choose me as your representative.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. I'd echo the thank yous to everybody. My family and I are almost 40-year residents of the Mesa. We're the third of five generations to live in our house on the Mesa. Much of my outlook over my public service, in addition to working a real job in the city, has focused on those, on those next two generations, the generation of our children and our grandchildren that are all in town. I look to make government work better for the people in the moment, make it work better for the future generations, to bring a hope and a stability to the future generations that will be able to grow up, stay in the city, have a job, have a place to live. My approach has been to be engaged and responsive, both at the district and citywide level, something I intend to keep on doing. I bring with me experience working in the city structure, as a member of the Creeks Advisory Committee, Planning Commissioner, and then elected to City Council. My sort of analogous work outside that was a Governor Brown regional appointee to the Water Board, State Water Board, and I've also served on the Board of both the Santa Barbara YMCA, the Downtown Organization, and Visit Santa Barbara. So thank you and happy to be here. I would echo Tara, if I can say Tara's, comment also. It seems like there's been a real drought in opportunity and coverage in the 2nd District, and I'm thankful that we both get an opportunity to talk together and listen to people out in the audience, share their questions, because without that, it just wouldn't have happened. So thanks.
Thank you. And now it's time for our first question. The office that you see requires an oath to support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the state of California. The Constitution can mean different things to different people. What does the Constitution mean to you? I'll start with Mr. Jordan.
So I view the Constitution as a framework for, but shared success for every member of a community or just take that up the food chain of a nation. I think that it is a framework that allows those who believe in tomorrow, believe in community, believe in constructive collaboration and problem-solving, to find a basis of understanding that allows that to be manifested. I think it's just the differentiation between whether it's a federal or a state, I think they both have the same intent, and I believe that they set the stage for us to be successful if we so choose to follow the tenants, to be good neighbors, to be good citizens, and to work together.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
When you're thinking about the future, it's always a good idea to stop every once in a while, especially when you're thinking about a long-term, shared future. To stop every once in a while and look back and think what the intent was at the beginning. And having the longest-standing constitution in the world is something that I'm very proud of as an American. It's a foundation for us to rely on and to depend on when we have to try and sort things out in today's society, in today's laws. And other than that, I would agree a lot with what Mike thought.
The next question is about homelessness and encampments. It was recently announced that the city will be receiving less state funds for programs related for homelessness, despite, I believe, the city spending a great deal of money on programs to combat homelessness. The Supreme Court's recent grant's pass decision removes the Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment as a barrier to enforcement of camping ordinances, but does not remove the need to treat persons who are homeless with dignity and respect for their persons, particularly the mentally ill and victims of domestic violence. What's your approach to encampments, housing for the homeless, and other issues with a large number of people experiencing homelessness? And we'll go with Ms. Taylor.
I'd like to start by saying that homelessness is not a crime. Poverty is not a crime. And that it's very important that whatever processes and decisions that we make as a community, that we're remembering that we're dealing with human beings. That being said, I believe that homeless encampments, when you see entire villages of homeless people living together, that speaks so much of something that's broken in that community. And it's very important for those people who live in those encampments, for that situation to be dissolved as quickly as possible, obviously, with programs and support and opportunities to help them sustain housing for the long term. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
First, I will do nothing to address that question without leading with compassion. The recent Supreme Court decision that you referred to, I think, is a red herring that at best allows people to push people out of one area into a neighboring area without solving the problem. So I'm thankful that I work for a city and a community that handles the problem with compassion every day and won't just relate it to a legal ruling that allows you to push people out of its borders into a neighboring community. If this problem was easily solvable, it certainly would have been solved by now by somebody. I think the recent successes that we can point to in the city particularly lead one to hopefully feel better about it. The Tiny Homes Project that's downtown, the recently opened one out on Hollister Avenue, the county's purchase of the Motel 8, the Super 8, out in Galleta. All of these show potential on the ability to get people off the street who formerly would not leave because they couldn't leave things like their pets, their privacy, or their belongings behind. And it begins to see some return on just a huge, huge problem that sucks up a lot of funds.
Thank you. Our next question is about multimodal transportation. That's a concept. Can pedestrians, bicycles, e-bikes, and cars coexist? What's your solution? And you're next. You're up.
I'm up. Thanks.
We're rotating. It's easy.
I'm not too certain on the answer as it approaches e-bikes, so I'm going to set that one aside for right now. But if you're longing for a tangible example of a multimodal success, that would be the Las Pecitas multimodal path that was put in a couple years ago, that allows bicycles to get off the road and have a safe place to go, but at the same time is multimodal and allows pedestrians and bicycles that are not running down the road at a high speed to be on it. We are close to having one of those also in District 2 on Cliff Drive, that will separate bicycles outside of, outside of the lane of traffic, allow pedestrians better crossing of light, with lighted crosswalks and stop signals up and down that corridor. And projects like that not only benefit immediately by building better safety for the community, but they also solve the question of, will I bike or will I walk when I don't have a safe way to do it? And encourage that in a sort of passive manner that gets people out of their cars, enjoying themselves, offer safe routes to school for your children, and just overall improves the community.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I do believe that having multimodal transportation, walkers, bikers, skateboarders, is possible, but with standards and considerations. For instance, perhaps thinking about speed limits, or even maybe for a place like State Street, if you're thinking about that area, limiting it to just children, who are allowed to ride their bicycles, and, you know, the adults have to walk along beside them. It's just a matter of making sure that those of us who are walking in the area, or standing, or shopping, coming out of a store, or something like that, or leaving a restaurant, that we're not going to get knocked over and be injured.
Thank you. I've come to the conclusion there's no actual evidence that the people on e-bikes are trying to knock off the seniors as they try to get their lunch. Next question is about Measure I and city finances. The city faces a budget deficit estimated at between $7 and $10 million. The city council placed a half-cent sales tax increase, Measure I, on the November ballot. It's estimated to raise about $15 million. It's a general tax, and the proceeds can be spent on any government use. I'd like to know whether you favor the tax or oppose to it, and what are your priorities for the revenue if the tax passes, and what will you cut if it doesn't? Ms. Taylor is next.
In this day and age, where more and more of us are shopping online and choosing to stay home and purchase our goods, I can't support things that continue to add to discourage people from going out and shopping in their local communities. So things like sales taxes, increasing parking costs, these are things that I think encourage people to take the route of purchasing from their desktop on home instead of coming out into the shops and being part of the community that we have here. So sales taxes, so what do you do when you have such an astounding budget shortfall and deficit? And I think that's where we have to be kind of creative. And I see other communities trying new things. For instance, and I know that Mike Jordan has mentioned this in the past as well, unit vacancy rates are costs. These are one ways that we could, another way that we could look at. Some other communities are looking at offset deficits and ensure that the funds are there to cover such things. And we also have to look at what caused such a deficit. I mean, that's a pretty astounding deficit, and the gap in the amounts from being from $7 to $11 million, originally the conversation was it being $11 million, and then additional funds were found. That's a little disconcerting to me, as a former banker, that you have this much of a gap and this much of a deficit.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. So I support the measure in that it deserves to be on the ballot. So it clearly needs to be an answer that is addressed by the voters as to the path going forward. I would, in terms of the comment on it goes into the general fund and it's unrestricted, I would point to the last five or eight years of success of Measure C, which was the last initiative that the city passed, and promised to work on roads and building a new police station. And I don't think you can walk outside anywhere for five minutes and not see roads being worked on in the city and brought up to, brought up to speed. And we're just about to start construction on a police station. The priorities that I would employ or use if it was passed are the same that are on the initiative itself, and that is public safety, first responders, having to do with fire safety, homelessness, there's about four or five others, but those three top the list for me. If it doesn't pass, I think we will somehow find a way to creatively live that way, but I see a time coming where a full-service city like this, with all of the components of the cities we have, that others do not, those that are even right next to us, will have to start to rethink that type of structure.
Thank you. My next question is about State Street. Everybody has an opinion about State Street. My question is, you want to ban cars on State Street? If so, where? And also, do you support the adaptive reuse of empty buildings?
See, you may have to remind me about that second part of the question before I go too far, okay? So I see a version of State Street in the future that is evolving to a combination of cars and more pedestrian-oriented for families, children, and old people. I think clearly retail is in a different place than it was 20 years ago. Structurally, the type of buildings that are on the ground are ill-suited for today's retail. If you compare them to Coast Village Road, the buildings are wide and not deep. Ours are skinny and very deep. And people want to walk where they can look at a store and see all of the store. So I think there's some challenges on redesigning downtown to meet that vision of where the cars will be, where the pedestrian-oriented zones are. I like the pedestrian-oriented zones being in the middle between the development at Paseo Nuevo and the bottom of State Street behind the Staples Building. I think that's a natural zone. What was the second part of your question?
Adaptive reuse of empty office buildings.
Definitely thumbs up on that. There are some real challenges with the ages and building structures of these 100-plus-year-old buildings in the downtown to reuse them and meet state building codes, but definitely thumbs up on that.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I think that the city of Santa Barbara has really made every effort. In the years that I've been here, I can see how proactive the community has been in reaching out to the residents of the community and saying, come participate, give us your feedback. And that speaks to me very loudly about what type of a close-knit community this is. And that being said, I think that there's been basically a lot of futzing with State Street. And you're through COVID, and a lot of different hands, and a lot of different attempts, and sometimes it's good maybe just to let things settle for a little bit and go focus on other areas and aspects. For instance, our Mesa 2 District, you know, it's one of those things, we want to make sure that we don't get so hyper-focused on any portion of the city that we're neglecting any other portions. As far as conversion and reuse of old buildings, I'm a former mortgage banker, so I highly support that sort of thing. And the idea of a live-work-play community, that is just met with success in various places throughout the nation. So looking at how we're going to reuse commercial real estate in the future and adapt it into our community, I've seen a lot of creativity with that, and I think it can be very successful.
Thank you. Our next question is about housing. It's from our Housing Committee. If you didn't know, we have a very active Housing Committee, and they have a really nifty thing on the league website, which you can log into, and it gives you all sorts of data about local housing conditions. Highly recommend it. The city has seen significant development of market rate housing for households earning above 120% of the median area median income in recent years. However, we continue to fall well short of building and meeting our affordable housing goals for moderate-to-lower-income residents. Given this shortfall, what specific strategies should the city pursue to close this gap between market rate and affordable housing and maximize housing production for moderate and low-income households? Ms. Taylor is first.
Housing is always going to be an issue in Santa Barbara. You cannot have a community that is this astoundingly beautiful, with temperatures that remain this moderate all year long, and not have a situation where everybody from around the country wants to retire and bring their resources and then compete for housing here. And that competition of housing is going to push the lower rung of people out at the bottom. And that is where homelessness comes from, that is where the need for affordable housing comes from. So it's something that we have to look at and say, obviously, we need to look at increasing taxes as people move in and purchase new properties, because that is the cause of that. We also need to ask ourselves, is there really a need for a lot of additional housing? Or could we be more creative about how we manage the housing that we have here currently? And I think that's more important, because when you look at, there is an exodus of people leaving California. It's the first time in decades that has been the case, that the population is actually leaving instead of coming. We're having smaller families, and even, you know, in many ways, the populations are kind of settling and coming down. The market is kind of solving the problem. So we have to ask ourselves, do we need to buy, build more housing? And if we do, you know, what's the risk of that?
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. So I don't think it would be a secret for somebody who's an incumbent in City Council to say we can do better than we have done. to say we can do better than we have done. The demise of affordable housing history in the city started with the states axing the, what's called the RDA, redevelopment agencies, where 20% of increase of property taxes was held and automatically went to affordable housing in the city. And since that time, we have struggled to come up both with a mechanism or pathway, but more importantly, struggled to come up with funding that addresses who will and how will we pay for that. And we could certainly do better. Things the city have done recently to improve that are the establishment of a housing trust fund, where we have put money into it specifically to use as leverage with organizations like the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara. We just closed on two very large loans, both to Housing Authority and Habitat for Humanity, I hope that's the right one, of the several, and ran that fund down to zero, a $5 million fund down to zero, and now we're working to replenish it. But those type of changes, along with additions or improvements to the way we zone, the ordinances that prohibits work-live in the downtown, that type of thing, all of those are needed to be tools that we can approve upon and use.
Thank you. My next question is about land use planning. Some people say that the rigorous planning standards of Santa Barbara give it its character and charm. Well, others say that the planning process is an expensive burden that makes housing even less affordable. What's your view, and if any, a proposal for change of the process?
It's over here now.
You're good.
We'll keep track for you.
Thanks.
I would hazard of those two choices. I would take the first choice, has historically been the Santa Barbara personality, one of slow growth or extensive examination of every single project that equates to slow growth. I think it's generally getting better until you talk about what the state of California is mandating upon the city. Then I think it's generally getting worse as to the results. I see it still as a work in progress. I think it's a focus with every sitting council member and with every staff member in community development on how to get rid of the shackles that have historically slowed production of housing or production of redevelopment down and caused it to either fail or cost so much that it's infeasible. I think we just continue to work on it, work on it, work on it. In 90 seconds, I'm not going to be able to talk about items that I know that have improved that, but I believe it's on the pathway with both the executive team and the department heads that we have right now, that we are making improvements day to day, and we are committed to making it better.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
Mark, my partner, and I were walking down the shoreline the other day on the Mesa, and one of the things we were talking about is the idea that this is a community where people can live across the street and have an ocean view. You know, they still have their ocean view, but we, as the people, still have our shoreline park. And I think that that is such a testament to how Santa Barbara has been very cautious in development and has, from the very beginning, looked at it from a perspective of how can we preserve this beautiful place as much as possible, but still recognize that people want to live here. So, and I've watched, I'm a history buff, so I've watched the evolution of the city go from when it first began its development way back when, and then seeing the foothills be developed and fill in to where we are today. So, we can continue that path. There are lots of nooks and crannies. I see them all the time as a former mortgage banker underutilized real estate here in Santa Barbara. But we need to ask ourselves again, what is the long-term impact of that? When we think about things like going to the courthouse and laying our blankets down, how many more residents can we have here in the city and still have these aspects of the city that we take for granted as being part of Santa Barbara?
Thank you. I'm going to ask two more questions, and then I'm going to check and see where we are in terms of audience questions. Seems like a reasonable thing to do. My next question is about jobs and business. What can the city do to attract non-polluting businesses that produce useful goods and services and generate good jobs? And how can the city help the existing small businesses in the city?
I absolutely love this question. I've been volunteering for a program called Wall Million Cups for almost 10 years now, and it's a free community entrepreneurial program. And one of the things I stress in that program on a regular basis is that new business doesn't have to be production of goods. It doesn't have to have a negative environmental impact. As a matter of fact, new businesses nowadays, more and more so, I think particularly in California, particularly in the United States of America, we can say, how do we, as entrepreneurs, solve these global environmental problems? And you're just seeing astounding things. For instance, one of the people who presented at my entrepreneurial program is a man who devised a machine that you can sit on your countertop in your kitchen and put your plastic film into it, your plastic bags, your cereal bags, your meat wrappers. You clean them off and you put them in there, and it shapes them into a disc, a little hard disc. And that disc is recyclable. You just drop it in your recycle bin. That is phenomenal to me. And more and more, we're seeing people come up with these solutions that both may empower us to be more environmentally conscious and decrease our impact on the environment, but also on a grander macro scale, the folks who are coming up, the Elon Musks who are coming up with ideas on solar energy and wind energy and wave energy. It's very interesting in the future.
Ms. Taylor.
So, I think most of this answer can actually refer back to your prior question on how do things get through the process. Green or not, sustainable or not, the number one, I think, dynamic that inhibits existing or new businesses in the city are the processes you have to go to either to start a new business or remodel or improve an existing business. The city is committed to environmentally forward-looking development. We have recently formed an entire department around that, Sustainability and Resilience Department. So, internally, we are walking the talk and talking the talk. And in addition to just looking for sustainability, we're linking that sustainability or lack of it to the consequences of resilience, whether that's climate change, things like debris flows, too much rain, too little rain, that type of thing. The other answer I would give you to the actual question is that historically, cities have kind of let the evolution of what you're talking about take place, but it's clear that the city needs to be a greater partner and employ some type of private-public partnerships to incentivize and move in the direction of what you're talking about.
Thank you. My next question is about crime and police. How do you view the relation between the Santa Barbara Police Department and the community? What would make things better?
So, I think we have a great relationship and that dynamic. We're coming off a two- or three-year process, maybe a little more, following the death of George Floyd, where we totally revamped our Fire and Police Commission from just a sort of reporting-out commission to a commission that recognizes the dynamic of a modern-day community and their relationship, both current and historically, with law enforcement and provides a structured venue for high-level executive review with members of the public on police actions. I think that's a watershed moment in the history of Santa Barbara. I also believe that we have the executive team members present in our current police department that get this, that are supportive of this to the nth degree, that realize that we're only as successful as the person that's the least represented or the most ignored in our community, particularly when put in a situation where it's someone in power dealing with them.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
When I first moved to Santa Barbara, I had the benefit of having an apartment that was located literally within a block of the police station. So, everywhere I walked in the community, I walked right past the police station. And one of the first volunteer opportunities that I came across were the red shirts, the folks who were touring State Street. And I went on a tour with one of the representatives, and they were talking about the program and the requirements and expectations. And A, I thought that was really wonderful, that I had this accessibility and an opportunity to meet with somebody who volunteered directly. He wasn't a police officer. He volunteered with the program through the police officers, through the police force. And I thought that was really wonderful. I also know that Santa Barbara has one of the lowest records of violent arrests that I have ever seen in any community. So, it's very obvious that they take it serious to try and do what they need to do in a way that doesn't harm anybody. And we have the Police Activities League, and if you follow the Santa Barbara Police on Facebook, you'll see lots of ways to connect with them. I think that they really do a good job in reaching out to our community and trying to interact with us. And that is where bad things stop and good things start.
Thank you. We have a question about what is your position on rent control? Here's what I'd like, how I'd like to phrase it. If you support rent control, what do you propose to assure that landlords have their constitutional rights to due process and a fair return meant? And if you don't support rent control, what are you going to do to improve the affordability of rental housing? I think we should, we would start with Ms. Taylor, I believe. Is that right?
Again, I am a former banker, and I am a Main Street banker. The clients that I worked with when I was in banking are the people who come to you and say, "Tara, I have one house, and I have a second house that's my rental, that's my retirement income." So, when we think about rent control, sometimes we can actually put somebody like that in a situation where they can't pay their taxes, or they can't cover their maintenance costs, and they're putting, you know, even their residents within the rentals in jeopardy because they're not taking care of the property appropriately. So, I think there are other ways to address it. I think the market can address it, and I think when communities are aware of how, things like how Airbnb and other short-term vacation rentals affect the rental market in their community, and they take measures like Santa Barbara is taking to address those challenges, that that's a better way to go than to put a cap on things. Also, as I mentioned before, I've heard that some other communities are employing vacancy costs. So, if you have a rental unit that sat vacant and remains vacant for more than six months, then that's something that the community can come and say, well, either you're not right pricing it, or there's an issue with maintaining it, but there's no justifiable reason why a rental property in the City of Santa Barbara should go vacant for years.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. Well, I'll just give you the short answer based on the phrase you used, but I don't support rent control. I think the devil's in the details. I actually, I've watched one of the forums for the other two districts, and I know that's a hot topic, but I now see people using the words rent control and rent stabilization as if they're the same thing. And I see people kind of moving to the nuance of there are other ways to define what's called rent control that might be acceptable. But in its current state, a rent control or hard rent cap, in my research and experience, does not lead to the results you want. It creates problems with maintenance. It ends up, subsequently in future years, leading to less rental units available than when you started with. It leads to people not being able to actually get loans for major repairs because there's not a pathway that can be approved for them to repay their loan. I see part of the answer to your question on then what would you do for more rental housing? And I would tell you that our commitment to a housing trust fund, finding funding for that, working on deals as both I and another council member have done to increase the affordable percentage on a large project at Lacumbre, working on another project at the same time, too, at Paseo Nuevo. I think these type of efforts need to be made by cities to look for ways to increase the percentage of affordability.
Thank you. Having another question from the audience, actually, there are three questions. They're all sort of related. How will you increase, incentivize landlords to prioritize local workers and families? How will you preserve this little housing that we have in Santa Barbara? And how will you build or support affordable housing in Santa Barbara? What plans do you have? I can see a general support of affordable housing.
I'm going to ask for help on all three of those. So, first one was, how do you incentivize landlords to?
Prioritize local workers and families.
So, I will tell you, generally, the way that statement is written, it's illegal. And so, the one pathway would be to lobby for legislative change allowing to do that. There are pathways that are not as written there, where you can put together employer consortiums, which is one of the menu items that Eric Friedman and I have been working with on the Lacumbre project. And once you have a entity like a consortium controlling a master lease on a number of apartments, that entity can put a prioritization on their employee, their local employees getting into that. So, just a blanket, a blanket answer to the first one is it's illegal. Help me with the second one.
Second one, how will you preserve the little housing that we have in Santa Barbara?
So, one example, and quickly, is again, an action that Eric Friedman and I just brought to council a couple of months ago, and that was to rein in the out-of-control short-term vacation rentals that are eroding the single-family resident stock in this city, something like 1,500 units right now that we know of that are illegal and are all over both the coastal zone and the interior zone.
Thank you.
Way too long of a question, huh?
Yeah, well, there was several questions. Ms. Taylor.
There are a lot of projects that are on the books or in the works here in Santa Barbara that are increasing housing. And there are in the vicinity, like for instance, our neighbors in Galita, there are places that are close enough that you can get affordable housing as well, too, that are coming up. So, I think it's one of those things for us to continue to look for opportunities like that. As I mentioned before, I see many, many little nooks and crannies I think people would be surprised about if you walk up and down through the City of Santa Barbara, where there are surprisingly underutilized pieces of property that could at some point in time be developed into something else. And if that's the case, that's great. That'll definitely help with the affordability. And I'm sure that many of you are aware that there are two different kinds of affordable housing. There's affordable housing with a capital A, and then there's affordable housing, they call it, with lowercase a. So, affordable housing with lowercase a is kind of where you see somebody does a development, and a certain portion of them are required by law to be made available for lower-income housing. That's an example of lowercase a. It's privately held. Capital A housing, affordable housing, is where the government makes housing that is income-based and affordable to the community. So, these are things that many communities look at and utilize in order to make sure that we have the right mix and blend to cover the people that live here in our community.
My next question. What do you say to the youth of our district? What are the most important things that the city can do to improve the lives of its youth? I think you're first.
It is shocking to me how much Santa Barbara loves young people. When I came here, one of the things that stood up to me really immediately was the free lunch program through the summer, where any child who's less than 18 years old can go and access a meal someplace in the community for free. And as a child who grew up and went without meals, this stands out to me as a beautiful thing. The other thing is the opportunities, the programs that are available at the Santa Barbara Public Library, the organizations that are available throughout the community, just even, you know, when you go to our playgrounds and our parks. Santa Barbara loves our children, and that is where we start. So, as long as our school districts are working well with the community and the community's working well with the school districts, and also all those who are trying to offer programs such as the Santa Barbara Public Library, affordable daycare is a very big conversation in this community. I think honestly, that should be an issue that we discuss a little bit more than I ever hear brought up. But it's hard to provide affordable childcare in a community like this when costs are so high for those who provide the childcare. So, you see how that vicious cycle goes. And that's something that I think, as a community, we need to stand up and look at and say, how can we make sure that we're providing quality and affordable childcare to empower people to have greater impact on our community, and also to make sure that the needs of our children are being taken care of?
There's nothing wrong with that answer, except that the programs and services that were mentioned all seem to be the first ones cut when we have budget problems. So, whether it's a school district cutting their programs, whether it's the city cutting funds to the library, cutting funds to park and recreation. funds to the library, cutting funds to park and recreation, cutting funds to Police Activity League, I think the commitment continually has to be that, we're not building for me, we're building for my kids and my, my grandkids, those that are the future. And to strip away the pathway or the hope from those particular people just lead to a host of troubles that are manifested later on in life that never should have happened and also rob those people of their opportunity. Couple of examples, a year or two ago in the budget, we almost had the loss of a program on the Mesa at Monroe School for after-school children. I led the way to keep that for at least a year. Ms. Taylor mentioned affordable childcare, which is a huge, huge problem in this county. That is also a component of the Lacumbre redevelopment project, a, an opportunity to put an affordable childcare facility in that at the expense of the, the project. So there are ways that you can attack that. But I think the overall, the overall strategy has to recognize that you're building for the future.
Thank you. We'll have one more question and then, then closing statements. And this is kind of a, sort of an open-ended question. What, what do you think is the biggest problem that needs to be fixed in the Second District? And how, how would you go about fixing it?
Well, I think that's a day-of-the-week answer on what your biggest problem is any day of the week. I would tell you that the items that I've been focused most on the last year are short-term vacation rentals, taking up housing in the Second District, in the coastal zone, and leaving housing vacant when it's not being used by a short, by a short-term vacation rental. So just, who knows, make up a number on how much it's vacant. But it's removing a traditional move-in or move-up spot that this community has had historically for first or second buyers of, of homes. And the other problem, or the other, the other issue I've been working on over the last year most is, relates to fire prevention and fire safety. We have two coastal high-fire districts in the, on the Mesa that have seen the Loma Fire a couple, a little more than a couple of years ago, and are, seem to be lined up as the next place that a catastrophe would happen because we already admit that we have a high hazard, high-fire hazard area up in the hills, but we haven't recognized that it's also able to come all the way down to the water. So those would be the two items that I would put at the top of the list.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
I would say that some of the biggest concerns for the Mesa is to make sure that we're not hyper-focusing in other aspects and areas of our community to the detriment of Mesa businesses and Mesa residents, and to make sure that those voices have an avenue as well, and their needs are being recognized. And while I do recognize that it is a, and it's an astounding district, you know, it doesn't need, require a lot of tampering, but that being said, it also doesn't, we need to make sure we're, we're not neglecting the needs. So, connecting with the businesses on a regular basis, connecting with the residents and finding opportunities to have open conversations about the needs. I think that resources and facilities is probably a big, in my experience, is the greatest challenge in, in, on the Mesa, and saying, are these resources available the way that they were intended to be available to the community when they were built? I mean, it's Mesa tax dollars that built these facilities, and they should be available to the community as the community desires them to be. And I think that's probably the biggest one.
Thank you. Now, I guess I'd give you 90 seconds for a closing statement.
Thank you again for, to everybody that played a part in hosting this. And again, I'll just reiterate, it seemed like a little bit of a drought for District Two. I welcome the opportunity to see and meet people that, other than for an event like this, or somebody being able to watch it streaming or taped afterwards, probably would have never met me. There's 6,000 households in the Mesa. It's a little tough to say you've met everybody or talked to everybody. And unfortunately, most people that, that meet you are meeting you for not the best of reasons. They have a complaint or a concern, rather something to be excited about. So I'm thankful for this opportunity. I, I think I'd just leave you with two thoughts, two asks, two wishes. One of those would be that you would join me in the next four years to continue my service to both the city and District Two. And the other one would be that you recognize that the national, local, state situation we're in is just not a good one these days. The moderator mentioned it earlier, civility. I call it constructive discussion. And, and I hope that we realize that when we wake up every day, what a wonderful place we are, how fortunate we are to be here, the blessings that we have that many, many other communities don't have. And we start our conversations, our discussions, and even our arguments from that foundation and work collaboratory, collaboratively to work on the solutions to them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Taylor.
What a great way of transitioning right over this. So thank you very much for that, Mike. I agree 1,000% that we need to start having conversations with the idea that we're working together and collaborating to find solutions for our community and overcome any challenges that we face. So it's not a, it's not a battle. It's, it's a project. It's a community project. And while I know my roots here aren't the most deep, I don't have generations of family background here, they are dynamic. And I bring to the table a very fresh perspective and an appreciation for what a dynamic place that Santa Barbara is, and my community involvement as far as bringing the One Million Cups program here in 2019, and have, running that for five years for free for the community, almost solo, please come. We'd love to talk to you about starting a business in Santa Barbara, and volunteering with programs like Habitat for Humanity and the Freedom Warming Centers, and my involvement with First United Methodist Church, and lots of the community, the Community Environmental Council in Creeks Week. These are things that I think just demonstrate that I'm here and I care, and I hope that you select me to represent you and bring that voice and that perspective to the city council table and empower me to take care of the Mesa District. Thanks again to Legal William Voters, the CEC, and everyone else who put this event together.
Thank you very much. A round of applause for our candidates. Thank you for our candidates. Thank you very much.